I know. Well, I don't know, but I can imagine.
No, just because water's falling out of the sky doesn't mean it's coming to the bottom of the ground.
That's true.
So we're still problems.
I just made all that talk out there, start going with the falls and it's uh...
The only thing that we have to do in this kind of weather is, you know, if somebody's pump break or something like that, we need to be out there at six in the morning so that we can hopefully get it out and get it back in before the lightning starts cracking because...
Yeah, then put that big metal thing in the air and it's gonna...
Yep. Yeah, you think a golf club's good?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, try that.
You run a wire out and try to...
And drop it, and drop it into the water.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
How well am I grounded? Vice Mayor's right in front of you with the yellow shirt.
Well, this is much easier to do. But I'll see Mike isn't supposed to be around. Uh, no, he's gonna...
Are you American? You're dry.
Yeah, I'm doing good. How are you?
Yeah.
He's got a laugh. He's looking at me today. He's munching. He's just drilled down eight hundred fifty feet and he finds a place where he wants to go. He's drilled down eighty-five hundred fifty feet and he wants to get as much water. All I got came back was blue granite. That ain't good. I said blue granite for my place up by uh, nearby the fire.
There's only one competition.
Um, he said apple oil about dogs. He's a tough girl. Um, you know, that would go with...
Yeah, that's, that's been a bad spot for years. Yeah.
What did we say? At least you've got enough money to ask. Crap, we're not going out.
So what you been up to since working? Any fun?
Actually, we went down to Wolf's last weekend. We got that place down here. Somebody surprised somebody and brought down, dumped down here. We were not approved last year. So I talked to him and he was like, oh yeah. It was, it was pretty nice. I don't know. You put it in at Davis Camp. Yeah, there's about twenty thousand people floating down the river.
Well kidding. Twenty thousand drunk people drove.
Yeah. No, no, I think there was nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine. There were fifty-one hundred.
They were driving.
But they just, and it was still a great time.
Yeah.
Until you got to the end and tried to take out. I was, without words, I are these ignorant or just totally irresponsible people or so many had no clue what they were gonna do at the end. People getting out of their cheesy wraps that they went to Walmart bought. They just got up and walked off. Like their styrofoam cooler is right there. They just got out and walked off. You know, it's... But they say that the crews put on, they know that. And they charged sufficiently to have the crews, because the crews are coming through the ice picks, just punch holes in them and button them all up.
I've just seen them run them before. That's cool.
They do, they were doing it.
Yeah, that's neat.
What do you mean?
A little bit wet out there.
Everybody's a little spotted.
Lights, yeah. I'm not even in Appaloosa.
You all ready to kick this baby off? Are we ready, folks?
I am.
Ready, ready?
Hi. Just a little.
Morning. Ready? We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise and remove your hats for the invocation. Dear Father, we come before you this night asking your blessing upon the council meeting. Father, we ask that you would give us wisdom, that Father you would help us to conduct the town's business well and wisely, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Two weeks ago.
May we have the roll call?
You, good evening. Councilmember McKee?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Wojcik?
Here.
Councilmember Hatch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Croft?
Here.
And Mayor Marley?
Here. Ms. Lewis, Councilmember Best will be calling in during the e-session, okay? Introductions, presentations, and proclamations. Consideration and possible action to proclaim August 2014 as Child Support Awareness Month, sponsored by the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services. Do we have anyone here representing the DES? Okay, I'll go ahead and, and read the proclamation then. Whereas the safety and well-being of children is paramount and families need financial means and stability to protect and assist their children, and whereas providing resources to aid parents in succeeding can make a difference in helping to promote long-term security and enriching a child's life and will make our children stronger, and whereas parents and/or caretakers through a strong work ethic and personal responsibility can provide a stable foundation for life for children who are dependent upon them for their daily financial, emotional, and physical growth, and whereas collaborative community partnering with parents can assist in identifying valuable resources that may be necessary to achieve self-sufficiently, self-sufficiency, including employment, education, parenting time, health care, and other services to obtain the best possible outcomes, and whereas community partnerships can serve as a strong resource to families by providing constant family support and guidance and give families the power to decide their children's future, and whereas recognizing that education plays a critical role in improving Arizona's opportunities for growth and prosperity for parents as well as children and ensures children are well-equipped for school and achieve academic success at all levels, and whereas enhanced occupational and literacy skills enables parents to be more competitive in the workforce, improve self-esteem, provides for better-paying jobs and greater employment opportunities, and whereas the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is committed to assisting parents in realizing their financial responsibilities, updating and maintaining open, continuous, and consumer-friendly communications, and engaging with parents and diverse family structures to assist them towards greater self-sufficiency to attain the best results for Arizona's children. Now therefore, I, Chris Marley, Mayor of the Town of Chino Valley, do hereby proclaim August 2014 as Child Support Awareness Month in Chino Valley, Arizona, and urge all our citizens to recognize this observance. Item B is our presentation of the annual report by Tracy Shimitowski, CEO and President of the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce, as required by the accountability contract between the town and the chambers, okay?
Good evening, Mayor Marley, Vice Mayor Croft, Council, and Town Staff. First off, my name is Tracy Shimikowski, and I'm the President and CEO for the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'd also like to take a few seconds to introduce a couple of our board members. We have our current Board Chair, Bob Layton, here, Board Member Rick Nichols, our Treasurer, Mary Jo, and our Secretary Gary Warren. So first up, I'd like to begin by mentioning that for this last fiscal year ended, we had 1,799 visitors into the Visitor Center with 1,304 being Chino Valley residents, 279 being in-state residents, 198 out-of-state, 18 foreign, and we took over 2,000 in phone calls last year. Volunteer hours was 1,814 with, with a value of $36,425.12. Not too bad. Staff hours coverage was 166, which cost us $2,921.20. And I'd also like to mention that we did send out some relocation packets of 63, but we also answered 859 information requests through our website, and that would be via email, phone calls, and anything along those lines. How did we help create a strong local economy? Well, we continued efforts to encourage people to shop locally throughout the year, promoted the 20 on the 20th. We added the Tools for Business Success onto our website. We partnered with Epic Gravel Rides to bring the Chino Grinder to the community, bringing in more than 200 participants. We supported the state application for the unmanned aircraft systems as a test range. We also have active partnerships with the Arizona Chamber Execs, Arizona Office of Tourism, Chino Valley Unified School District, GPREP, NACOG, PVEDF, Town of Chino Valley, Western Association of Chamber Executives, and Yavapai College, their Regional Economic Development Center. We also supported the Economic Development Authority Grant for the Town of Chino Valley to have infrastructure at Old Home Manor for potential new businesses, and we are in support of the General Obligation Bond. We also represented Chino Valley at the annual ICSC recon in Las Vegas, of which we came back with 34 leads from restaurant, food, retail, grocery, and service industries. How did we promote the community? Well, we operated the official Arizona Office of Tourism Visitor Center for the Chino Valley, and we undertook an expansion and redesign of the facility, which I have a couple photos in this PowerPoint a little later, and we added Wi-Fi. We maintained the chamber's website, which had over 300,000 hits and averaged 4,364 visits per month. We maintained the chamber's Facebook page, posting events, member issues, and any chamber exposure. We hosted the Weekly Talk of the Town Show on KQNA, 11:30 a.m. and 99.9 FM. We hosted Chino Chat on KKLD. We are listed on the arizonaguide.com, and this is the Arizona Office of Tourism Online Travel Guide, of which any business in Chino Valley can have their name and information listed for free. We also installed a computerized kiosk in the Visitor Center, which adds Chino Valley information to a statewide travel network, and there's approximately 19 kiosks throughout the state of Arizona. We also promoted events, members, and community information in the Sunday Daily Courier, Chamber Focus. And we co-sponsored the Territorial Days and Hometown Chino Christmas. And I'd like to mention real quickly that the bolded items under each of these headings are part of the Town and Chamber Service Agreement, so I wanted to let you know where those are categorized throughout this process. We also provided networking opportunities, holding monthly luncheons, mixers, women-in-business luncheons, and business-educated breakfasts. We implemented Chamber Master to enhance members' website presence and promote events, hot deals, press releases, and member-to-member discounts. And I'd like to mention real quickly here that this last year, under our calendar event searches, it had 464,317 hits. Not too bad for nine months of this, of this software. We also launched the My Chamber app for mobile devices, providing on-the-go information about member events and hot deals, and this same information is also available on that application. We continue to support the Prescott Area Young Professionals Affiliate Organization, participated in grand openings and ribbon cuttings. We hosted the annual Home Health and Business Expo, of which the Town of Chino Valley had a booth at. And we partner with Prescott and Prescott Valley Chambers and the Yavapai County Contractors Association to host the Home Health and Lifestyles Expo that's coming up this September, of which any chamber member in Chino Valley is entitled to a $50 discount off of their booth space for the two days. How did we represent the interests of business with government and did any political action? We supported the Arizona Chamber Executives Annual Pro-Business Platform, utilized legislative session to support or oppose bills that could affect the business community. We've attended town council meetings. We co-hosted Governor Brewer for her State of the State address luncheon with the Prescott and Prescott Valley Chambers. We've also started conducting opinion polls at our luncheons, been very helpful. We co-sponsored the Citizens Academy with the Town of Chino Valley and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we partnered with the Prescott and Prescott Valley Chambers to do the candidate meet-and-greet that just took place in July. And now to go into the fiscal year ended scope of services as part of the Town and Chamber Agreement. We distributed the Chino Valley Location Relocation Community Guide and Maps. We do have a link of the Town's Business Directory on our chamber website. We just recreated the community, the guide that has the attractions and accommodations, event and dining. I handed that out, I believe, at the last council meeting, and I have some with me for anybody who might be interested in, in having a copy. This has members and non-members, so it shows everybody here. We maintained the community calendar. As I mentioned, our calendar had over 400,000 hits this last year. We featured the Town's Business Support Center and the Chamber Visitor Center, and the town is also taking advantage of one radio show per month, and of course, the platinum benefits for sponsorship. We expanded the Visitor Center to hold more brochures, so anybody who might be familiar with the office itself, where my office used to be, I am now back in the corner, and I hid myself. We have put slat wall and brochure holders and expanded that Visitor Center office. We completed the Citizens Academy this last spring. We had 12 graduates and very positive results from that, and folks wanting to go through it again. We updated the chinovalley.org website to have additional information, and we hosted two travel writers from Adventure Cyclists for two days. They visited Granite Creek, had dinner at Checkered Apron, and they stayed at the Primrose Inn. There'll be articles coming out talking about their stay. They traveled all over northern Arizona by bicycle. Yeah. I'd be like, mm-mm. And I know the pictures are a little dark, but this is kind of an idea of what the Visitor Center looks like now. And then the folks in on the right side are Tom and Kim from Adventure Cyclists with Heather from Granite Creek. This is also the platinum sponsorship where you're getting exposure at all of our events. Everything from recognition on the radio shows to recognition at all of our luncheons, flyers in our newsletter homepage space, and it has a value of $8,376 for $2,500. Frankly, this is the best way for any member to be a part of the chamber. This is the maximum exposure. And this is just a copy of our annual report. I just wanted you guys to see what it would look like in its brochure form. And for the budget, we did really good. I actually was darn near in line with it. We had a little, about $360 left over, of which we ended up using anyway, for the reprint of the brochures, and so we broke even.
Do you have a question?
Is that the entire budget for the Chamber of Commerce?
No.
I'd like to see the entire budget.
This is just the budget for the Visitor Center.
Yeah, I'd like to see the entire budget.
I don't know that that's possible, that because we are a private corporation...
You're not a private, you're a, you're a nonprofit, and that's public information.
The 990 is, is public information.
That's right.
Yeah, and that, that I can get to you. That's not a problem. I can get you the 990.
All right, thank you.
And other Arizona Chambers with municipal partnerships, Apache Junction, Buckeye Valley, Cottonwood, Costa Grande, Oro Valley, Kingman, Morana, Sedona, Wickenberg, and Williams. And if you were to take out the lowest and the highest, you can see that our partnership with the town is darn near in line with everybody else. And so it's a great partnership, and, and we enjoy being able to provide what we do for you. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions on this side? Yes, ma'am.
Was, was the amount the same this year as last year, or is it, has it increased?
The amount for the Services Agreement? Last year it was 40,500, which was 38,000 for the Agreement and 2,500 for the Platinum. This year, we are looking at 45,000, $2,500 for the Platinum and 42,500 for the Agreement, but there are some additional things in there that I'll talk about later, which has to do with advertising with the Arizona Office of Tourism and participation at a couple of conferences.
Okay. Did you have a, a follow-up question? No? Ms. Hatch, you had one?
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused as to what we discussed now and what we discussed under the item on the agenda. I wonder if maybe we shouldn't pin that until, because I do have some money, questions about the expenditures.
Oh yeah. I'm, I'm sure there'll be questions when we get to the agenda item.
Okay.
Were there any more questions regarding this particular presentation?
Comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We appreciate the partnership.
I feel the same way. You're doing great. All right. Our next item is, item C, a presentation of the lease proposal. And this is conceptual right now, but it's a lease proposal for Old Home Manor by the Yavapai County Youth Livestock Association. And Suzy, will you be the lead speaker there? If you would, please introduce yourselves to the audience.
I sure will. Okay, my name is Suzy Chuka, and I am the Chairman for the Yavapai County Youth Livestock Association. YCYLA is a new organization and is currently in the process of filing as a 501(c)(3). It has been created for the purpose of promoting youth livestock events in Yavapai County. Currently in Yavapai County, we have approximately 140 members of 4H. Over 112 of those are in the Chino Valley area. Over 800 members of FFA, 50 junior rodeo and high school rodeo participants, with several members that qualified for Nationals in Iowa, and approximately 10 members of SALA, an elite group of youth livestock showmen that show livestock at a very competitive level statewide. The interest for our youth in these livestock events is huge and always growing. For Chino Valley, this is a niche for our youth. With our rural environment, this is the opportunity for our kids to participate in a program that fits our lifestyle. Unfortunately, aside from the FFA program, which is located at center and Highway 89, and the 4H FFA Expo, which holds their annual event at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds, the youth livestock members in our county, and particularly in our town, have nowhere to call home. All participation must be held at another town, and with that comes the expense of transportation, motel, food, wear and tear on vehicles, and additional stress on the animals. This brings me to why I'm here tonight. YCYLA is interested in discussing a lease with the Town of Chino Valley for the use of the arena at Old Home Manor. The arena at Old Home Manor, constructed several years ago, was built from my memory to hold rodeos here in Chino Valley. It originally had a large roping arena with bucking chutes, holding pens, roping chute with return alley, small warm-up arena, announcer stand, and grandstand. The arena has not been in productive use for many years. Today, it still has the large arena with bucking chutes, the holding pens, and roping chute. The fencing that is there is only in need of minor repair. The ground is weed-covered but still good. There is water and electricity available on-site. The grandstand, announcer stand, small warm-up arena, and return alley are gone. Our association has a plan. We would like to have our base foundation for the facility to be the Yavapai County Youth Livestock Association. This would encompass all youth horse and livestock events. With the arena in its current condition, we can have weeds cleared, groundwork, minor fence repairs made, and have the facility ready for youth and 4H horse shows, livestock practice, jackpot events, and youth gymnastics. These events can be held through the organization of YCYLA and through agreements with other clubs or organizations, with the assurance that the appropriate insurance requirements will be met. We would also, as schedule allows, permit the use of the arena with other equine livestock clubs or organizations, and of course, once again, with the appropriate insurance requirements. In our broader plan, we would like to see the arena eventually returned to a spectator facility, with high school, junior, and adult rodeo, as well as spectator events in all realms of the equine and livestock world. We also have an additional plan. YCYLA would like to bring a county fair styled event to Old Home Manor as well. What better place than our rural community? We may start small, but that's okay, because we feel that the participants and the public would like to see more of the old-time type county fair with traditional activities. This would include farm goods, livestock, hobbies, and local talent for entertainment. That is our plan. I would like to now take time to introduce you to the board for the Yavapai County Youth Livestock Association, myself, the chairman. I lived here, I moved with my family to Prescott area in 1966 and have lived in Chino Valley since 1989. We own a business, we have five kids, and they're involved in multiple facets in the community 4H FFA, numerous athletic activities, and I myself as a volunteer. And this is Danielle Feller. She is our treasurer. She relocated to the Chino Valley area from California and was involved in the movie and television industry. She had a background in showing and still shows in horse jumping since she was seven, and would, is very excited to see equine and livestock events continue in Chino Valley. Rosie Darby is my Vice Chairman, and she is involved in Chino Valley with her four boys. They're involved in multiple facets of the livestock activities, as well as rough stock, roping, 4H FFA. My secretary is Eileen Ferris, and she has a background in, she was a trainer for race horses. She also has a business background in the racing industry, and she's also involved in 4H with her daughter. So that's our board. I think we bring to you a board with some good experience, knowledge from past experience, organizational experience from their current situations, and strong ambition for the necessary vision to make this happen. Reference the terms of our lease. This is our request. Currently, the arena, with no grandstand or announcer's booth, is not a spectator facility. Therefore, most organizations using the arena will be for nonprofit. The arena does not have a tractor or water... stock, roping, 4H FFA. My secretary is Eileen Ferris, and she has a background in, she was a trainer for race horses. She also has a business background in the racing industry, and she's also involved in 4H with her daughter. So that's our board. I think we bring to you a board with some good experience, knowledge from past experience, organizational experience from their current situations, and strong ambition for the necessary vision to make this happen. Reference the terms of our lease. This is our request. Currently, the arena with no grandstand or announcer's booth is not a spectator facility. Therefore, most organizations using the arena will be for nonprofit. The arena does not have a tractor or water truck for working the ground, and although Adam Temberg from Chino Rattles has graciously offered to donate a tractor for the price of delivery and fuel, with the water truck rental, it will still cost the eventers 400 to 500 a day for just their ground keep and equipment rental. Let me share a comparison. I spoke with managers for Fort Tuttle, a roping facility at the fairgrounds and flight staff. They charge $500 a day for the use of their arena. This includes arena prep, as well as one load of water. Additional loads of water are $60 per load. Use of their office facility is extra. The arena facility is similar to ours, however, they do have a grandstand and an announcer's booth. So as you can see from the comparison, our eventers are going to be spending the same amount for rental equipment to be able to use the arena as they can spend elsewhere for a full working facility. YCYLA therefore would like to ask the town of Chino Valley for a five-year lease at a nominal $10 a year with an annual report available for review, as well as continual access to all books from our club. This lease amount will allow our organization to charge minimally to our eventers, and in this process will create participation for our arena. Our organization is nonprofit. Our initial expenses, such as insurance costs and arena prep, will be met through donations and fundraising. If we at any time are unable to charge eventers, are able to charge eventers for the use of the arena, once our annual costs are met, we would put that money back into the facility. We would like the lease to include all of Section 8, including the arena and office area on the east side, as well as a portion of surrounding areas for additional parking if needed. The plans for future funding would be for the return alley, and you have to have this to have ropings. You have to have a return alley or it makes it real difficult. You have to run the cows through the arena. A warm-up arena, an announcer's booth, a grandstand, a water truck, and a tractor. We understand this is not going to happen overnight and that fundraising is also going to have to be a part of this process to get the arena to the place where we all have a vision for it to someday be. But we hope that the town of Chino Valley can share in our enthusiasm and also can see what an asset this can be to our community, not only to our equine and livestock enthusiasts, but also to our town, supporting our business community through the following: motels, gas stations, restaurants, feeding grain stores, and general tax revenue. But most importantly, supporting our Chino Valley youth, who make up 35% of our countywide livestock youth participants.
Okay, excellent. And we will hopefully down the road be speaking of this as an agenda item, but thank you for the presentation. You had a question, ma'am?
I have a couple of questions. This is certainly an attractive proposal, but I do have some questions. Are you currently registered with the state as a nonprofit? Are you incorporating?
We are in the process of incorporating.
You have not filed an application yet?
We have. I have the application to file, and then I-
So you have not yet filed?
Not yet filed, no.
So you are not officially a nonprofit with the state yet?
No, not officially.
Okay. We'd have to probably see that before we could, you know, consider something like that. The other thing is, I would like to see a complete budget once you're at that stage, especially with insurance.
Okay.
But you, you know, you need to be a registered nonprofit, I think, before you go forward with this.
Yeah, and I know the 501(c)(3) is going to be a lengthy process. The incorporation, not so much, but we have to have one before the other.
My understanding now is with the 501(c)(3), when you apply, they'll send you a letter back telling you how long to expect, but there's a period of time in which you can continue to operate. But the first thing you have to do is register with the state.
Okay.
So you need to talk to someone and get your legal status straightened out first.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hatch. As I said, this will be a future agenda item. Right now, it's not an agenda item. It's simply a conceptual plan that you've brought to the council.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I look forward to working with you. I think this is a great idea for the kids. It's a great idea for the town. We need this kind of entertainment here in the town. In the future, I think it'd be a great asset for the town.
Okay.
And if there's bull riding, I'm sure Vice Mayor would be happy to participate. Mr. Turner?
I welcome this. I thank you ladies for the work that you've done so far, and will be happy to support anything that you're going, you know, going toward in the future. We've got a facility out there that could be fantastic, that is doing nothing right now. So the fact that we've got people in this community that want to volunteer to make it happen, I think is tremendous.
A good positive for our community. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Were there any other questions on this side, on this side? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council concerning a subject that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Does anyone have anything for call to the public that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
I will take some agenda.
Steve Chantos, Chino Gulf Range. On March 17th, I sent a letter to the town manager asking about what legal authority the town was planning to build a road across my property without a dedicated easement. I'm still waiting for a response, and I hope to. I'm asking for one. I have provided with you, you with a recent Arizona Supreme Court case, which defines dedicated easements in full. It was in your packet. I've also given you copies of recorded affidavits from two people who signed those easements in 85 and 86 for their separate parcels. They both state that this easement was not for a county road dedication, but was for giving access to five landlocked parcels and others to make them all more marketable. The town attorney, after researching the county records, admitted to you that she found no evidence that the county had accepted any dedicated easements to those properties. And yet, on June 10th, you adopted a resolution accepting those quote "previously dedicated easements" that did not exist. This action puts a cloud over your resolution. Or is it possible that you were planning to break precedent and be the first Chino Valley council to build a road on an easement that has not been dedicated to become a town road? I ask you again, what evidence, what proof do you have that the easement across my property is a dedicated easement? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're allowed to, as a part of the call to the public, we're allowed to respond to criticism, as it were. I suppose if our town attorney, would that be considered criticism that I could respond to? Possibly not, huh? Okay. Anyway, there's more to this than meets the eye. We'll leave that right there. Okay. Okay. Any others for call to the public? Yes, sir?
Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Just an update from your fire district. The joint management agreement was official on July 18th. So we are working jointly now with Central Yavapai Fire District. I'm the fire chief for both. We've already seen improvement in efficiencies, as well as some cost savings here and there that weren't expected. So that's a positive. We're getting out and in the communities, Chino Valley, as well as in Prescott Valley and the surrounding areas. Myself and our operations chief, interim chief Jeff Polacek, attended the national night out here in Chino so that we had a presence in the community. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to commend your police department chief Winn and his staff. In my 20-plus years in emergency services, that had to be one of the best, if not the best, national night outs I've been to. So a great job by them. So things are going well with the fire district. We're moving forward. You probably saw press release out some information on new battalion chief vehicle that we just put in service, where we got the proceeds for that, why and how we came to that decision, as well as what was replaced in order to put that unit in service.
Okay.
So, and if there's any additional questions after that, or if any of your constituents come to you with questions, I'm more than happy to provide information for you. One final thing, and I will, I promise to stay away from anything that would violate any type of open meeting laws. I would just like to remind the public that the Chino Valley Fire District is a separate governmental agency from the town of Chino Valley. So I am not subject to the same restrictions as the staff of the town of Chino Valley when it comes to speaking about the general obligation bond, one way or the other.
However you are, if you're on town property-
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, please, don't interrupt.
Oh, I'm not talking about it. I'm just saying that when I'm out in public, if you see something in the newspaper, just for the public's knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have a statement?
However, he and no other person of the community may use town resources to advocate for or advocate against, and we've stopped people before.
That's correct.
So if you're on town property, you shouldn't be taking a position or using town resources to talk about it at this time.
Yes, and I understand. I just wanted to make the differentiation between me and the town, that's all.
You bet. A clarification. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I did want to make the comment that I was, had a number of questions by some particular people in the community, and really appreciated the chief's response. And also, the rest of the fire department, they went right out, investigated, responded to the person who was very concerned about a tank being used for, to put out the fire should it be needed. And it was a very fine response, and we really appreciate your efforts.
And we appreciate you bringing that to our attention so we could address it.
You bet.
Thank you.
And also, we appreciate your soaking down the town so we can't catch fire. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others for call to the public? Okay. Yes, sir?
As a separate subject.
Oh, hang on for just a moment. Ms. Smiley, this is, this is new ground for me. I'm not familiar with folks speaking twice at call to the public on different subjects. I'm okay with allowing it one time tonight.
I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chantos, come on up.
Just a question. What was the reason, or what is the reason that was used to create 89 between 2 North and 3 North to extend the water and sewer lines when there were other areas available? That's my question.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there's no others for call to the public, we'll move onwards. Item number four is response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during call to the public at a previous meeting. We didn't have any call to the public questions that were raised at the last meeting that weren't answered during the actual meeting itself. Moving on to item five, current event summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events, or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation on information requested by the mayor and council will be made and questions answered. No action will be taken. First item is Ms. Mayday, presentation by Development Services Director Ruth Mayday regarding Old Home Manor Industrial Park Economic Development Administration Grant Presentation to NACOG on August 7th, 2014. And I believe later on in current event summaries, Councilwoman Hatch has something to add on that. Ms. Mayday has grown a beard. What's this?
I couldn't resist, Mayor, and if you will, if you will give me two or three minutes of your time, I wanted to share with you part of the presentation.
The microphone.
I'm sorry. I wanted to share with you part of the presentation that we provided to NACOG. Not only did we supply information about the grant application itself, but we wanted to provide some context, and we finally have a tool to be able to communicate that with folks in the viewing public. Up on the screen here, I've got a map that shows the town of Chino Valley area. If you look, here's Prescott and Prescott Valley, and as you head north, Chino Valley here in the middle. And here's the airport to give you an orientation. It's on the south edge of your screen. I just wanted to orient the NACOG folks about how this project fit into the town of Chino Valley and what issues were moving forward. And so I was able to, with staff's help, create a map of some of the infrastructure. These red lines here are Chino Valley's existing water system. And of course, we're talking about the Prescott Water Acquisition. I believe that is in the bond information pamphlet. And the Prescott system on this map is in green. And so you can see the extent that the Prescott Water System expands water transmission from the very south end of town up to Perkinsville Road. It greatly leverages the town's fire suppression abilities. I also wanted to highlight in the map to NACOG the required interconnects that we were going to have to create in order for these systems to work. So again, the geo-bond contains information relative to the construction of these blue pipes, so that the red and green pipes all work together as a system. I then described to the NACOG folks the work that ADOT was doing in and around town. I think everybody has suffered with the 89 widening between the airport and the south end of town, but people don't realize that a significant number of roundabouts are also being installed by ADOT. So there's going to be a roundabout here in the 5 South area. Then there's a roundabout at 4 South with the statue. And as you head north, ADOT's going to be signalizing the 1 North intersection, and ADOT will be installing roundabouts at Perkinsville Road and at 4 North. Those intersections there in particular are of interest to the project at hand. I wanted to highlight to NACOG the additional roadwork that the town was doing. We've got the Road 4 South extension already done, and that exists, it goes all the way out to the Peavine Trail. This coming construction season, Center Street will be made a through street from the very back end all the way to 89. The construction season after that, we will link those two roads along the Peavine right of way. We will not destroy the Peavine Trail, but we will create a road link there for those two. And then the IGA with ADOT, where the town's getting the millings, we will be installing Collector Street extensions, the Road 1 East extension, as well as an intermediary street to connect that roundabout near 5 South, or it's 4 and 3/4 South, back to 1 East. I also let the NACOG folks know that in the general bond question is an area of economic development. That area exists between 2 North and 3 North. And within that same area, ADOT has a lot. I don't, everybody drives past it, but nobody really looks at it. This is where all those cinders are on Perkinsville and 89. That lot is about the same size as the Safeway lot. That lot is about the same size as the Safeway lot. And the town is in talks with ADOT right now and a developer about trying to remove those materials from that lot and develop it, creating some, some commercial activity. And then, the meat and potatoes of what we were chatting with ADOT about, the Old Home Manor area, and let me see if I can find my, here we go. Old Home Manor is 850 acres that the town owns out of Perkinsville Road, and the application in front of NACOG and in front of the EDA is to install infrastructure out to that area in order to create an industrial park. The town is currently reserving 200 acres on the west end to create the industrial park. We have plans for paving and dressing Jerome Junction Road to provide better access out there. The EDA grant funds would help us also pay for an extension to 4 North to create an alternate access to the industrial park, so that there would be two ways in and out, and both ways would have some form of controlled intersection, both roundabouts. Additionally, there has to be water out to the industrial park, and there's a waterline extension that's being proposed as part of the EDA grant project, as well as a gravity sewer line to serve the industrial property. Lastly, we have talked to Unisource for a gas line extension. We have pricing on that from them. We would be able, we would hope, to provide residential or domestic natural gas to homes along the way, or offer that to them as we get high-capacity, high-pressure gas back there for the industrial park. So, I wanted to take just a quick moment to chat with you, to show you what we showed NACOG. I think it's impressive what the town of Chino Valley has on its plate for consideration right now, and possibly transformative. And the funding that we get from ADOT, I'm sorry, EDA, may help us realize that, that transformation. And Ruth, Ruth is the real horsepower. She's the one who is getting all the detail work done. I just put the colored lines on the map.
Excellent. Thank you.
No problem. He does a little more than that. Okay, so, the balance of the project and the application for the EDA really involves, like Robert said, a lot of detail. You can go to the next slide. Oh, can I click? Oh, I can click. Okay, so, one of the things that EDA asks us, or requires us to call out, is what they call the area of benefit. So, and they look largely at census tracts. So, what you see here are a number of census tracts and census data places. For instance, Pauldon, because it's not an incorporated town or village, but it is a place, is considered a census data place. Chino Valley is a town, an incorporated town, so they have their own, we have our own census data place. Ash Fork, and then the balance of the yellow north of Pauldon is a portion of Census Track 21. I believe it's Block Group 1. Anyhow, this is the area that we think that will be, that will most benefit from the improvements that we will be implementing at Old Home Manor in terms of economic development and job attraction and retention. It is within the driving range that we looked, and travel time to work, excuse me, that we looked at in terms of figuring out who would benefit and how, how far they drive to work. So, this is a chart that shows you the travel time to work in minutes. This is information that the census collects and provides to communities and talks about relative, this chart talks relative to the United States, the state of Arizona, Niwapa County, the distance and the ti, I'm sorry, the time that people travel to get to work from this region. In Chino Val, in the Chino Valley subregion, as we call it, because this is a subarea of the NACOG region, people on average travel 26.44 minutes to work, which is 18% more than the county, 7% more than the state of Arizona, and 3% more than the United States. Now, keep in mind that this is travel time, it's not distance. So, you have to look at how far you can get in that amount of time. For instance, in major metropolitan areas, 20 minutes is not going to get you very far, whereas someplace rural like Chino Valley, you can cover some ground, as long as the police are around. So, when we send these applications into, into EDA, there are two things, there are two sets of criteria they look at. Number one is called economic distress criteria, and that is based on per capita income relative to the rest of the United States. And per capita income, of course, is how much income there is per person in the area. For Chino Valley, it's significantly less than Niwapa County, it's 30% less. The per capita income, so each man, woman, and child in Chino Valley has an average income of $17,000 a year, relative to 25 for the county, $24,000 for the state of Arizona, and $27,000 compared to the rest of the United States. So, the other factor that EDA will look at in economic distress criteria is unemployment. This is not the right slide. Where did it go? There we go. So, in terms of unemployment, it's, it's a factor that the EDA considers to see, relative to the rest of the United States, how is this, how is this community impacted differently by the lack of employment than the rest of the country? So, in, in this example, looking from 2008 to 2012, the average unemployment rate for the United States at that time was 9.31%, where for the subregion, it was 11.83, almost 12%. Let's see if I can go back. No, how do I go back? Oh, there, keep going. Okay. So, the other set of factors that EDA will look at is something that's called special needs. Special needs focuses on things that are major events. A major employer leaves, the community brack for the base realignment and closings, natural disasters and emergencies, and underemployment is one of the things that they will consider in a community. The two factors that we look at in, in underemployment are whether or not the people that live in the community are undereducated or overeducated for the jobs in the marketplace, and whether or not they can find full-time work. So, in talking about educational attainment for the population over the age of 25, 59% of the population in this subregion has a high school diploma, but the five, top five employment sectors, which are educational services, health care, arts entertainment, and food service, agriculture, forestry, fishing and hunting, and then construction, almost all of those do not require a high school degree to be able to get a job there. There are very few that do, and we'll take a look at those next. So, in looking at these industries by the occupations, by the actual kinds of jobs in them, you can see that for arts, entertainment, and accommodation and food services, the largest group of workers is, are in the service occupations. For the education and health care, this is the only one where management-level jobs exceed the lower-paying service sector jobs or the sales and office jobs. So, in retail trade, clearly, sales jobs are going to be the leading source of, or the leading occupation. In construction, surprisingly, construction jobs. And then, for agri, agriculture, forestry, fishing, and hunting, and mining, you can see they're pretty well balanced. The number of management-level jobs are lower than the sales jobs, the service occupation, and the production and transportation jobs in that industry. So, in looking at those industries by earnings, you can see the green bars represent those industries we've just talked about, and the, and the median, I'm sorry, the average income for those industries in this subregion. The highest one, obviously, is going to be health care and social assistance, because that's where you have a lot of teachers, you're going to have doctors, nurses, things like that. After that, you, we're at construction, and then the retail trades and upwards to arts entertainment, which is at about $15,000 a year. And this was what was really interesting to me, because I'm a numbers junkie. If you look at the, there is an inverse relationship between the industry by earnings and the distribution of population by industry. So, what this means is, the highest paying job, which is informa, industry, which is information, has the smallest number of workers in this subregion at 1%. Whereas, the, if you look at wholesale trades and finance and insurance, those that pay, pay $52,000, $40,000, $54,000 a year are only at 5%, yet educational services at 23% pays 46. The arts and entertainment and leisure at 15% of the population, those jobs are paying at $29,000 a year and below. So, we're looking at a high concentration of low-paying jobs. Here's another one that's kind of interesting. We also looked not only at who, where, what occupations these people were in, but how often they worked, how many weeks a year, and how many hours in that week. The shocking thing here is that for, between 2008 and 2012, 47% of the working-age population, 16 to 64, in this region, did not work at all, not one week. After that, we had 32% that worked at least 50 hours a year, and the balance worked much less than that. And in terms of hours worked, usually, about 35% worked at least 34 hours a week, and then the 47% did not work at all, and the rest of those people either worked at least one hour to 34 hours. So, you have, again, low-paying jobs, not a lot of people working at them, and not getting a lot of hours when they do. So, those are the two factors that we look at, at underemployment. We will be submitting this application to EDA this time, looking at the underemployment factor, because I think it, it really tells a much clearer picture than the per capita income and the unemployment data that we have. Again, these are the proposed improvements. Robert went through these already. This is the estimated project cost. The, Ron Gritman, the town engineer and Public Works Director, has gone through and given us a pretty solid estimate of what these individual item, items are going to cost. The water, installation of water lines and the engineering in a contingency are $447,000. The sewer extension and engineering and contingency are $415,000. The extension of Road 4 North and the box culvert, that will give us an alternative access to the Old Home Manor, is just over $1 million. And the natural gas line, assuming that the town does the trenching and the backfill, is at $586,000. So, that gives us a total estimated project cost of $2,634,000. Now, in trying to determine how the, these infrastructure has an impact on the community, we looked at the commercial permits that were issued in the county, in, and in surrounding communities. So, Niwapa County, you can see up here in green, Prescott Valley is in red, and Chino Valley is in blue. So, you can see now, granted that Prescott Valley is much larger, they have a lot, larger retail area, a lot more further-developed industrial park, but still, when you look at the fact between 8 and 13, Chino Valley issued 152 commercial permits, which include retail, manufacturing, any business-type things. Prescott Valley issued almost 10 times that. So, that's the kind of impact that, even though their, their population is, what, almost four times ours, they issued nine times the permits that we did for commercial uses. And this is the dollar value of the commercial permits that were issued. So, you can see the disparity between, again, Niwapa County that issued 5, I don't have my glasses, 50,000, I'm sorry, 50 million, geez, count the commas, $50 million worth of permits, and Chino Valley was at 26. So, there was some economic activity that went on, even though the economy was terrible, but relative to some of the surrounding communities were, were lagging back, behind and picking up that steam. We already talked about that. So, change in unemployment rates. So, one of the things that we looked at was, to determine the impact, is even if we spend all this money and put all this infrastructure in, is it really going to have a significant impact on the community? If you look at this chart, we talk about the population 16 and greater that are in the labor force, how many of them are actually employed, how many are unemployed, and how many are not in the labor force. At five jobs, we move the needle 7/10 of a percent. At 50 jobs, we move it almost a quarter of a point. At 100 jobs, it's at 1.5, it's almost a point and a half that we reduce our unemployment rate by. And at full employment, which economists will argue whether it's 5% or 3%, we will have dropped our rate to, by 6 and 3/4 points. So, another thing we looked at in terms of dollar impact, direct dollar impact, was the changes in aggregate wages paid just by one 50, 50-employee factory or production facility at 5, and at 100, and at full employment. Now, this assumes every single job pays the average $39,400 that the average production job in this area pays. So, you can see that a five-person shop doesn't make a huge dent, but it's better than nothing. And at 50 jobs, we, it's a $2 million direct impact just from those wages alone. So, to take a, to validate this and take it a step further, the town has been working with Elliot Pollak in, in looking at the economic impact that this project could have. So, this chart assumes, obviously, $8, or $8, eight jobs in construction, two indirect jobs that would come from that, and one induced job, for a total of 11 jobs, $414,000 in wages, and that would spin into $1.56 million in economic output. In terms of one 50-job shop that would come in, we are talking about wages in the neighborhood of $2.8 million, that's just from those employees, and an economic input or output of $16 million. Indirect jobs, jobs that serve the factory, or secondary economic impact, would be about 15 with another half a million, almost $600,000 in economic, in wages, and almost $2 million in economic output. And induced jobs, those jobs that result from the direct and the indirect impact, employees spending their money in the community, would be $475,000, and that would bring, provide another $1.4 million in economic output to the community, for a total of $20 million of economic output and 3.9 million in wages. So, one of the things we also have to do is to tie this economic development project to the, what's called the SEDs, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, that NACOG develops for the region. And we went through and looked at all of their, the plan of action, the challenges that are facing the region, and tied the activities that are either ongoing now in, in the Old Home Manor, or that are projected to occur, to the strategies and plans that the SED set forth for the region. For instance, one of their target opportunities is business development and retention. This project will help us retain some existing employers on Gavin Court and allow them to expand, and we can attract new employees, or employers. Tourism experience, a lot of people come to this area to use the shooting range, and the police training facility, and we, as Tracy talked about tonight, we had the bike race, which was a huge hit. That all was based at Old Home Manor. So, these are the kinds of things that EDA looks at, so that we are tying this project into what the region wants to see happen, and what EDA wants to see happen in the community. So, I've talked long enough. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions on this side? No. Any questions on this side? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was very good. We're trying to get some jobs out here. Yeah, all right. Status report by Town Manager Robert Smith regarding town accomplishments or current or upcoming projects, anything?
Mayor, just wanted to thank staff again for all the support to create this approach and strategy. It's taken a lot of work to get these details to this point. Um, it's taken a lot of work to get these details to this point, um, and, uh, we want to say thank you to NACOG as well for a thumbs up, uh, last week on, uh, getting us in front of the EDA. We look forward to the challenges ahead in terms of funding and structure, uh, and we'll be bringing an application to you as soon as we possibly can, uh, for consideration and approval, so we can submit it to, to EDA.
Excellent. That has been a big project, and I know, Ms. Hatch, you've been involved in it for quite a while.
Yeah, I'll do my report in a minute, do some explanation, whatever, when you're ready for it.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're, you're, you're all finished, are you not, Ms. Smith? Okay, go ahead.
You just need to take their, their tilted according to, uh, what you need. The first page that you, um, have was put out, it's, uh, the two thousand fourteen scope of work. It was actually required to be in in June, and so it does cover the current plan. We're also working on a new five-year SED. The EDC, uh, has a subcommittee that works on the SEDs. They choose people from all areas, and myself and several other members of the Chino Valley were able to work on the SEDs. It's confidential until the final report, um, but what you have in front of you, um, are the delayed for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, which would cover our grant proposal. Um, the items listed here, actually, we got a delay, it was supposed to already be in, so we're allowed to submit it in December because we're doing the overall SEDs. And if you look at, um, item seven, support and provide technical assistance for the town of Chino Valley Industrial Park Development Project, that was the one item that the federal re- representatives specifically asked, um, that be included in our scope of work. It was made quite clear to us during the EDC meeting, it's highly unusual for that public official to pay a site visit, and it's also, more often than not, he just says no to Terry Drew. So we were very, very, um, pleased with what happened with Chino Valley. There was a lot of, uh, questions about the SEDs. Each, each, uh, individual business area during the EDC meeting wanted to be sure that their particular business was included, and when I looked at the last year's SED, I could see that it did not cover the one business that we planned to help, and, um, it, it looked like it was targeted towards specific businesses. For that reason, when we all talked about it, and because technology is moving so fast, we made a very broad document, as opposed to what it's been in the past, so that it would cover anything that Chino Valley or anyone else. Um, for instance, in the last one, it had airports, uh, very limited under the type of businesses, the list that, um, this May Day put up had very specific, like, four very specific areas which not, would not have included our specific business. So it's being updated to include that, and as I say, we were given a delay. The, uh, slideshow that you have, um, was also presented by a new group. This was actually an MPO, which is a transit agency, which saw a need, um, public transit agency in Maricopa County, and they saw a need to, uh, to help with transit, as well as other, um, businesses, to establish, uh, sort of a LinkedIn, but for businesses, Mexico, the United States, and Canada. Uh, their website, um, is listed on here. They're a startup, uh, you can go online and look in a particular area, you can enter your own business, it's free. Um, it's a very, very interesting website, I pulled it up while they were speaking. Um, and I think that would be my report. I, congratulations to our group, they, our staff did a superb job, and, um, they ran over our lunchtime, and nobody moved, and nobody left. So that's how, um, they allowed them to go almost as long as they wanted, which is very unusual for that group.
Excellent, excellent. Any others on this side? Any others on this side? Uh, my, my mayor's report on water stewardship is in the paper, and since we've gone, uh, fairly lengthy time as far as the, the first part of the meeting, I'd encourage you to read it in the paper, there'll be more articles there later. Uh, we're going to move on to consent agenda. I wanted to, uh, once again, thank our council and thank our staff for the work they've done on this, uh, on our economic development for the town. This is, this is going to be so good if we can get some jobs in here, so. Consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Does anyone wish to remove any consent agenda items on either side? Okay. Uh, Ms. Lewis, may we have the consent agenda?
Sure. Six A is consideration and possible action to approve the May fifteen, twenty-fourteen study session minutes. B, consideration and possible action to waive town fees for the territorial days activities for the Lions and Lionesses. C, consideration and possible action to rescind the intergovernmental agreement for election services between the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors and the Yavapai County Recorder and the Town of Chino Valley, approved on July eighth, twenty-fourteen, and approve the corrected intergovernmental agreement for election services between the same parties. And D, you'll be approving a recess to observe council member Hatch's birthday.
All right.
And there will be cake.
And there will be cake.
He's going to pull the last item.
As a discussion item, or are you going to really do?
The, uh, birthday celebration.
Okay. If, if you pull it, then we have to discuss it as a separate item. Okay, all right. The chair would now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda item six A, B, C, maybe D.
And maybe D.
That's second.
And we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we will recess till, is a quarter after enough, or you want to go till twenty after? Twenty after.
Who seconded that, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Who seconded that, please?
Uh, it was seconded by.
You're so quiet.
Okay, okay. And everyone voted aye. All right. Motion carries. We're recessed till twenty after.
Did we lose Don?
Don.
Don.
Okay, he's wandering up.
Ninety years ago. I never drank anything.
A lot of people do.
Just as strong as you can get.
It used to make me so sick. Oh, couldn't handle it. The smell of it, the taste of it, because I never drank it.
If that's the worst thing we ever deal with, we got it made, Don.
Uh-oh, now with the whole of you, you have to sit up there and let them poke his engine.
All right. Not, not when there's cake around, okay. All right. We'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting back to order. Entering into action items, action item seven A is consideration and possible action to approve an accountability contract between the town of Chino Valley and the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce in the amount of forty-five-thousand dollars. Funding source, thirty-eight-thousand dollars to come from non-departmental outside agency line, and seven-thousand dollars to come from contingencies. Um, and Mr. Smith, are you going to be doing the presentation on this? Before we do, uh, Councilwoman Hatch made an excellent point, she said we, we really ought to disclose who all on the council here are, are members of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I, for one, am a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
I am the town representative to the board of directors for the chamber.
Okay.
I've been on the chamber since before I had gray hair.
And I've been on since he's had gray hair. I helped give him some of it, all right.
I'm also a council member, and so is Mr. Best is a council member.
Okay, okay. So we have, uh, six out of seven of our, of our council members, apparently, are, are members of the chamber, and...
He is, too.
Oh, you didn't raise your hand. You're a member of the chamber also? Okay.
You can't see me when I raise my hand, just like you can't hear me when I talk.
Okay. Easy enough. Oh, uh, is Ms. Smiley, I needed to ask an opinion after a second. Ms. Smiley, whenever you're available? Oh, Ms. Smiley, whenever you're available? Oh, it's all right. Oh, no, it's, it's, it's no big deal. We're, uh, needed to ask an opinion, uh, since all of our council members are, are members of the Chamber of Commerce, and I believe that, uh, we're part of a group larger than forty, uh, uh, since all of us are, are members of the Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to be voting on a contract regarding the Chamber of Commerce, uh, does that affect it at all?
And then the board member, we have one person who's on there.
Oh, yeah, we have a board member.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
You could have told me this ahead of time.
Okay. No sweat.
I just consult for a second, so.
Maybe we should go on to something else in the meeting.
Yeah. That, that would be easy enough. Oh, the, the chair would take a, a motion to table it till later in the meeting?
Motion to table this, uh, item seven A until, uh, later in the meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And if we can't resolve it, we've always have another meeting.
Oh, God, yes.
We've, we've always got those. Okay. Moving on to item seven Bravo, consideration and possible action to approve a financial report for the month ended June thirtieth, twenty-fourteen. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ms. Smiley, just let me know how long you need, because I'll, I'll talk as long as you need. Um, I mean, Mayor and Council, tonight I wanted to get together with you and just talk really briefly, and, um, we've done our, basically wrapped up the year, last fiscal year, and as you know, one of the important things is, is in March and April, we project where we're going to be, and we need to make sure those projections are pretty close. And, uh, so I want to go over that with you, and just show you where we are at the end of the year, and just hit some of the, the major highlights, or the major highlights of our financial report. I do want to say, though, because I'm an accountant, that this is tentative and preliminary prior to our financial, final, final audit, but as far as I know, all the adjustments have been made, and we're very, very close. I'd like to start with the general fund this evening. As you can see, the general fund revenues, and this chart, the blue chart is last, is fiscal year thirteen, or the blue bar, the red bar is fiscal year fourteen, our budget, what we adopted for budget is the green bar, and then our projections are the purple bar on the right side. So if you look at our general fund revenues, they did increase over last year by, to, by eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars, and that was primarily due to the one-percent sales tax increase we adopted. Revenues ended the year seventy-six-thousand dollars over budget and exceeded our two thousand fifteen budget projections by fifty-eight-thousand dollars, which was really good. So we budgeted conservatively, as we always do, our revenues beat the budget, and even our estimates going into next year's budget were a little bit, were, were fine. On our expenses, the same, the same thing happened. Um, the general fund expenditures were five-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars higher than the prior fiscal year, however, we ended six-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars under budget, less than we projected, and a hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars less than what we projected in April, March and April, when we did the budget. Now, the reason we are so far under is we had several departments where we had budgeted for things just in case, and we didn't spend the money. One of them was our town clerk's election, police salaries were down, um, just for turnover and recruitment time, we weren't hiring enough, fast enough. Uh, recreational salaries, we saved there, park maintenance, we saved forty-three, the aquatic center continues to be really cost-conscious, and they saved a lot more than we expected. And, and then our contingencies, we had a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand. That's only a portion of the savings. We also had savings in a lot of other departments that, you know, a little ten-thousand, fifteen-thousand dollars here, so this was system-wide, and our departments really should be commended overall for really watching their budget. I mean, all of them across the board really did a great job. Our HERF fund, basically what I'm compared here is fiscal year thirteen and fiscal year fourteen, and the HERF revenues from the state were, were actually down slightly, and that was because of some interdepartmental revenue that we received. But the, the HERF tax revenues increased by twenty-six-thousand dollars, and this year we're anticipating an increase of another thirty-two-thousand dollars. And as you can see, in thirteen, we collected seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand in revenue and spent six-hundred-and-nine. Well, this last budget year, we decided to use some of our fund balance and start doing more road improvements. Here is a chart that really shows our fund balance. The top line, the top blue line, in fiscal year twelve, we had seven-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, we went to seven, seventy-three in thirteen. This last year, we started the year with nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. We did a, a large chip seal program, we were down to six-hundred-and-seventy-six, and in this, in, we're projecting to be at six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand at the end of this year, this current budget year, and in fiscal year sixteen, be down to three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand. Now, the red line on the bottom shows the amount of, that we budgeted for road materials. And in fiscal year fif- fifteen, the other chunk of that was the a hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the Perkinsville Right-Away with a dot match. But what, the point I want to make here is that we are going to spend our fund balance and do as much as we can, but we're still not putting a lot of money on the roads. And so this is where the town needs to come up with either another funding source, we have to somehow supplement that if we're going to keep our roads maintained, and this is where that deferred maintenance cost is just getting bigger and bigger every year. Our capital improvement fund, as you know, primarily that's funded by one percent of our sales tax. You can see that, um, it actually went down, and in fiscal year thirteen, we had a drainage project that we, that we recorded the revenue of Yavapai County Drainage Project, and this year, it, um, the revenue was down just slightly because of that. The expenses, however, in fiscal year thirteen, we really held, didn't do too much, and these are expenses before transfers out. These are just costs of projects that we're doing through the capital improvement funds. And what we do is we take funds, we transfer road impact fee funds, we have our one-percent sales tax, and like the Yavapai Drainage, we'll bring those monies in to do the projects, and we account for all the expenses in this capital improvement fund. Now, this last year, we had a million dollars worth of projects we completed, and they included, um, the, the Center Street Box Culvert design, we did the Road Four South Right-Away acquisition, uh, we did the Road Four South construction, the Road Three North Stormwater Project, which was the Yavapai Drainage Project, um, Chino Meadows Unit Five, we started to design on that, and we had our UniSource gas payments on there, too. So we did quite a bit of work in the capital and projects fund. Next year, and these revenues are less, um, the bond issue and the lease purchase that we did budget for in there, and you can see our revenues are going to go up a little bit and, um, projecting some grant funds. But what, if you look at the bottom of the chart, here's where most of the capital improvement funds go. They go to support the general fund, which, per when we adopted the tax, uh, we could use that to help supplement the police department. A lot of it's going, two-hundred-and-twenty this in fiscal year fourteen, but two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand in fiscal year fifteen is going to supplement the water enterprise funds. And this is the money that I think we can target towards road im- improvements. We'll have to do a resolution to change that, but if we can get our enterprise funds off the back of this, if we don't have to transfer these funds every year, that would make a nice little contribution towards, towards fixing our roads. And the rest of it goes to, to debt service. Our water enterprise funds, our water enterprise fund is really in the worst shape of any of our funds, and as you can see, these are, these are the expenses, not including depreciation. And when you, what I would like to be able to show you here is that revenues exceed expenses, including depreciation, because we're living off our depreciation. And even though it's not a cash expense right now, it's going to be a cash expense in the future if we're not, if we're not generating enough funds to, to properly replace equipment as it wears out. So as you can see, in fiscal year thirteen, we had a, a loss, significant loss, and then in fiscal year fourteen, that loss continues, so about a hundred-thousand dollars. And the funds to cover it come from the capital improvement fund. Now, the only way to get out of this, of course, is acquire new, new accounts, growth, or to continue to raise rates. So we have to get these two, the blue and the red, to swap. Uh, the sewer enterprise fund, and of course, again, this is on cash basis, not including depreciation, so we're not putting any money away, but the sewer enterprise fund cash-wise is actually do, is solvent. We're not having to borrow money from anybody to cover the bills, but we're still not generating enough to expand our system, to replace equipment as it wears out, we're just, we're just sort of hanging in there. A lot of that is because of the adopted rate increase schedule, and we did have some growth. A large part of the revenues that you're seeing there is also, we had sewer buy-in fees. We added fifty new residential units to the town, and a little over thirty of them hooked up to our sewer system this year. So we are seeing some growth, and those buy-in fees, about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, helped increase that revenue lineup. So it's, it's positive, but it needs to be a lot better than it is today. So overall, our financial condition, just a quick little summary, that the general fund is stable and covering its day-to-day operations. The HERF fund, the town is using the HERF fund balance to perform the minimum amount of road maintenance, and we need additional funding in that fund if we're going to keep our roads to any... And we need additional funding in that fund if we're going to keep our roads to any level. Capital improvement fund continues to subsidize the water enterprise fund. And again, these funds could be used for road improvements. The water in enterprise funds is not covering the cost of operations, acquiring new accounts and growth is essential. And the sewer enterprise fund is showing positive cash flow, but it's not generating any excess funds. So it, it still can do a little bit better. And with that, the detailed financial report that you have in your packet is on the website at chinoaz.net. And if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Something that just was brought up to me and I'm, I'm not exactly sure it's come up off and on. Part of the park that we put on was supposed to have some funds set aside, like ten thousand a year for a couple of years that was contributed by the newspaper. And I wonder where that money is accounted for? Grant money that they gave us?
For?
It was supposed to be for an amphitheater? Yeah, and there's money that we received actually for an amphitheater and I, I didn't notice it anywhere in the budget. Where is it?
And who did we receive the funds from?
From the newspaper. Yeah. Yep, and that's historic and I don't want to see that money go somewhere else when it was very specifically donated for an amphitheater.
Okay, well, I have not seen any of those funds come in since I've been here, but I can research it and find out where it is.
Yeah, how you're saving them because we don't want to spend them on something else. They were very specifically donated for that.
Typically, any designated funds like that would be kept in our grant fund and that's where we keep them. But I have not seen any designated for an amphitheater so far. Yeah, and how much do you think that is?
We can find out from them pretty easily, but it's a, you know, twenty, thirty thousand maybe. I think it was three years, but they committed to ten thousand a year for a number of years, ten years.
Ten years, okay.
And, and I don't know that they've contributed in recent years, but they did pretty routinely for several years.
Yeah, I have seen nothing, no documentation whatsoever, but I can research it for you.
I'd appreciate it if you'd research it and get back.
I will have you. All right, we can build the Daryl Croft Amphitheater.
The amphitheater, that's right, and it would be a fine thing.
Lon may know more about it too.
Yes, sir.
Well, I brought this up, oh gosh, probably three years ago with our previous town manager. And he did do some research on it. And I understood that that money was still in a pile.
And we make sure that it's still there.
And that there was, and I believe it was, I believe it was three years that we got money from them. We got money from the Yavapai Indian Tribe also for the, for the gazebo. And this was all part of Phase Three Park. Well, when heritage grants went away and that all kind of flattened out, then both of those entities quit putting money in. But we still have the money that was, was put in for that.
Is he enough?
So we want to make sure it's still there?
I'll find it.
You bet.
If it's there.
Thank you. All right, it'll be there.
It'll be.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
You're going to accept it?
Recommended action.
Yes, sir.
Ready for a motion?
Motion to approve financial report for the twelve month ended June thirtieth, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consideration and item C. Yes, ma'am, did you have something? Okay. Item C, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number fourteen dash ten forty-four levying and assessing, and add valorum tax on the assessed value of all real and personal property within the boundaries of the Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement Districts for fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen pursuant to section forty-eight dash six sixteen Arizona Revised Statutes. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the final step in levying the tax for the Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District. Just a quick, we, on July eighteenth, we adopted resolution fourteen dash one oh four oh, which adopted the tentative budget. We published a notice in the paper of the public hearing for two weeks. On the twenty-second, we adopted another resolution, fourteen dash one oh four three, which approved pro, proposed statements and estimates of expenses. And tonight, the last step is to adopt resolution fourteen dash one oh four four, levying and assessing the tax on the district.
And these will continue ad infinitum, right?
Yes, sir.
I thought so. The gift that keeps giving.
Gift that keeps giving, sir.
The Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve res- resolution number fourteen dash one zero four four, leveling and assessing, levying and assessing the add valorum tax for the Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District for fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
All right.
Second.
And we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Even heard that over the cake. All right. Item D was requested to be removed at, I was asked that before the meeting tonight. I guess we could motion to table it till a later time? Yes, ma'am?
I found a scr- an error, a Scrivener's error on page ninety-six of a hundred and three. One, two, three, four. The fourth paragraph, the last line, it says Reed Road from Road Five North to Road Four South. I believe that's supposed to be Road Four North.
That was on page ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
Yes.
Fourth paragraph.
Fourth paragraph down.
Where it says Reed Road.
The last bullet point there.
Okay, Reed Road from five north to four south. And should be five north to four north?
I, I think so because they're talking about being three miles of roads or something and that's quite a bit more from Reed.
Okay.
Do we have a date or is it going to be the next time? Table it indefinitely, is that what we're going to do?
Oh, we'd probably just table it to the next meeting, I would imagine it'd be able, we'd be able to do that. Okay, yeah, that'd be easy enough to clear up before, before the next meeting. Thank you. All right, the Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to table action item seven D until the following meeting.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Let's do the last one and then go back.
Pardon me, ma'am?
Are we going to do the last one and then go back or we're going back now?
Let's do the last one and go back.
Oh, yeah, we ought to do the item E. Just wanted to make a note that we had tabled item D. Consideration and possible action to reschedule the November eleventh, twenty fourteen regular meeting and cancel the November twenty-fifth and December twenty-third, twenty fourteen regular meetings. Is there any discussion on that to, as far as rescheduling it to November eleventh so that we don't have?
I thought we already only have one meeting in November and one in December. Don't we, didn't we pass that a long time ago?
Yes, and then when you moved your meetings from Thursday to Tuesday, we reverted it and took that out of the code. So every year, you have to decide whether or not to hold your second meetings.
November eleventh is Veterans Day.
Veterans Day and then the twenty-fifth is two days before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So. But you have to hold one meeting in November, we're required to hold one.
And we've got to have a meeting. Okay, that's good. All right. The Chair would entertain a motion?
When are we going to move it to?
Would it be appropriate to move it to a study session Thursday?
No, they, they've got a date down here. We just canceled the twenty-fifth and the twenty-third.
But the week that they, that it suggested is the week before Thanksgiving. And I looked at the calendar and saw, oh, there's no council meeting that week, so we made reservations out of town.
That was, that was one of the weeks that I was going to be in town, so I was hoping to, to catch that one. All right. The suggesting, suggested date was moving the November eleventh date to November eighteenth, the following week. That way, we're, we are away from Veterans Day, which is a holiday. And also, it keeps us from falling on the week of Thanksgiving. Are there any more, is there any more discussion?
I think she's, she's recommending the thirteenth.
Recommending the thirteenth.
That's fine with me.
May I point out that we still, if you, if you move the meeting to the thirteenth, and even if you move the meeting to the eighteenth, there is still may be a need for a special meeting in order to canvas the election. Because we just, the county cannot predict how long it's going to take them to count the ballots. They're, they're telling me they expect it to be at least a week.
When is the, what date?
The election is the fourth.
So if we have a regular meeting the thirteenth, it won't make it. So you're saying?
Possibly, possibly. I mean, there's just that chance.
Yeah, the eighteenth would be, I'm, I'm good with the eighteenth. Any other thoughts from the council? Okay, oh, I guess we could do two motions, do one for the?
Reschedule the November?
To the thirteenth and one to the eighteenth, or do you want to do the one for the eighteenth and then?
Let me, let me do, let me do the first one first and then we'll do the second one.
All right.
Make a motion to reschedule November eleventh, twenty fourteen regular meeting to November eighteenth.
And?
And to cancel the November twenty-fifth and December twenty-third, twenty fourteen regular meetings.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Good enough. We are now able to go to executive session.
No, we have to go back.
Fine, fine. I was hoping we could, okay. We're moving back to item seven A. Consideration and possible action to approve an accountability contract between the Town of Chino Valley and Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars funding source, thirty-eight thousand to come from non-departmental outside agency line, and seven thousand to come from contingencies. Did we have a presentation on that?
What did she decide first?
Ms. Smith, can we, or, Ms. Smiley?
Ms. Smiley, he's Smiley, I'll be Smith, that's okay. It's all the SMI stuff.
Nice lady, yes.
Yes, mayor, members of the council. In order to determine whether you have a conflict of interest, we look to whether you have a substantial interest. A substantial interest is one that is pecuniary and not a remote interest. I believe in this case, you all have a remote interest because I believe that the Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization. And so as such, as members or unpaid board members of the nonprofit organization, you do not have a substantial interest, you have a remote interest.
A remote interest. Excellent, thank you.
But, but we still should disclose it.
Yes, ma'am, you had a question?
I'm glad we disclosed it in any case.
Oh, you bet, you bet. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, Mr. Smith, fire away.
Thank you, Mayor Morley, Council. This will be the second contract I've worked on with the Chamber of Commerce since coming to Chino Valley. And I, I wanted to say that before Tracy came up and, and gave her presentation that I've been pleasantly surprised year over year with the improvements at the chamber and the additional services and value being offered by the chamber to the Town of Chino Valley. Tracy and I worked hard over the con- contract draft, that's before you. We believe that the contract draft as it's currently structured falls within the pricing range of the communities around us that are similarly situated and actually contains quite a bit of value and services to the business community that some of the other communities don't enjoy. And if it's okay, I'd like to invite Tracy up to give her presentation on the contract.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'd like to go through everything with you for the fiscal year fifteen Town Chamber Services Agreement and Provisions and Budget. And it's very similar to last year's. We did a little bit of recategorizing. We're still going to do the visitor's center, maintain and staff the visitor's center located in the town and abide by the criteria set forth by the Arizona Office of Tourism where we have to be open forty hours a week throughout the year with the exception of holidays and other identifying, you know, times in which we could be closed. The meeting space is also available at the chamber facilities for the town at no cost. And we provide that at no cost to all of our chamber members. Promotion and marketing, we will continue to distribute a relocation community guide and maps of the Chino Valley area. We'll provide a link to the town's business directory from the chamber website and we'll also have printed copies available. We will provide the redone and newly designed accommodation, attraction, event and dining guide, including members and non-members. We'll coordinate with the staff to build and maintain a community calendar, which we are already doing. And as I mentioned previously, had over four hundred and sixty thousand hits this last year. We'll provide a town booth at the Chamber's Health and Business Expo. We'll co-sponsor a variety of town and chamber activities and participate in town-sponsored and other community events. We'll feature the town's Business Support Center. And with the expansion of the visitor's center, we're able to have a little more floor space and hopefully be able to put some sort of a kiosk in there that will focus on the town and, you know, all the services they provide, materials and items as such. Again, the, the radio show per month that is hosted by Matt Santos, the Platinum Sponsorship. And we will continue expanding the visitor's center, looking for possibly one to two donated computers so that there are other areas where folks can come and use the web, create resumes, anything that they might need to do for job searching. We'll also continue to put on our printed materials that any funds for those items are, come from the Town of Chino Valley. We did that on the attraction guide. When it comes to economic development, we expanded this section a little bit. We'll continue to coordinate with the town and other economic development organizations such as NACOG, Northern Arizona Council of Governments, Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, the Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership and Yavapai College to represent the Chino Valley business sector and to foster business development in the Town of Chino Valley. We'll also assist the town in developing a balanced mix of base jobs, retail businesses, restaurants, shopping, nightlife and social activities that attract families, visitors and residents to live and shop in Chino Valley. We will participate, promote and support the development of the business incubator resources in Chino Valley in cooperation with the Town of Chino Valley Small Business Support Center. And we will also promote Build Community By Local and Spend Twenty on the Twentieth, which recently at our chamber luncheon, when we had a little roundtable discussion, we did find out that that Twenty on the Twentieth advertising campaign is working quite well for those advertisers. So it is bringing money into those businesses and we are seeing a lot of the Twenty on the Twentieth happening. We will renew the Tools for Business subscription on the chamber website. And another good thing from that, it normally has a fifteen hundred dollar fee per year. APS has agreed to continue with five hundred dollars of grant money towards that for all the partnering chambers and municipalities that have had it in the past. So the cost to us this time is only a thousand dollars. We want to reengage the Chino Valley Economic Development Group and partner with Yavapai College Regional Economic Development Center to reach out to the business community for input and needs. And we actually already started that process. I just sent off to Alex some information on all of our businesses here in Chino Valley that have licenses so that we can start surveying them to find out what their internal needs are, whether it's training on Word, Excel, anything along those lines. For tourism, we want, would like to participate in the Arizona Office of Tourism Co-op Destination Marketing Program. We've never advertised, from what I can tell, with the Arizona Office of Tourism when it comes to cooperative marketing. And this is a fifty-fifty program where we provide two, you know, half and the Arizona Office of Tourism provides the other half. So for instance, if we say we want to use two thousand dollars, they would match that with two thousand dollars. We'll continue the Tourism Committee, of which Councilmember McKee has expressed interest in being on. And if we are able to do some cooperative advertising with AOT, we definitely would want input on that as well from the town perspective. When it comes to education, we'll continue with the Citizens Academy. And this next one, if it makes everybody cringe, we can take it off. And that was assisting with public education for the Geo Bond, so.
Excuse me, Ms. Schumantowski, would you be up for a question right now?
Yeah, mine would be more with the attorney because assisting with education, which is mixed with people speaking at the chamber in favor of that bond, gets a little bit sticky because I would hate to see us paying that and have somebody come back and trying to decide. I personally think it ought to go out.
I agree, I agree. I'm, I, I'm with you on that.
They should be free to say whatever they want as a business for that bond without having the town intermix. They should be free to say whatever they want as a business for that bond without having the town intermixed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Does educational, speaking, I mean, educating the public does not have to be pro or con?
Right.
It doesn't, but it would be very difficult in that situation to separate it. I think we're better off just taking it out. They're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway with respect to that, the businesses that are in favor of it. Several of them are here. The fire department already speaks about it at many of those events. They should be free to say whatever they want without having someone saying town funds might have contributed to some part of that. It could be a mess to straighten it out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hatch. Hold, hold tight for a second. Mr. Turner, did, did you have a follow-up question?
No, it's just my question. I, you know, I, I talk to many people per week about it, and I think I'm able to do very, very well in telling them, telling them what it's about, what it will do, without saying you should or you shouldn't.
Without pro or con, good, good. Ms. Smiley, you were asked for a, an opinion on that?
Right. I agree with Councilmember Hatch that there is a tendency when it's, when you have an education forum, it may be set up as that, but once discussion begins, it kind of tends to get off track and to keep it completely separate from the town. Since the town is paying for this, I think that it would be probably recommended to not include that as something that the town's paying for.
You bet. And what, what page is that one on? Yes, sir.
Are you telling me that, say, the fire chief couldn't come into the chamber luncheon and talk about the obligation bond?
No. And I thi, I think we need to clarify a little bit that
Clarify what education is?
Well, no. The fire chief can say whatever he wants. He's not a town employee, he's not a town resource, okay? And as council members, you also can say whatever you want when you're out there. You just can't use town resources. So if you're out speaking at a chamber luncheon and you're not there on town business, you're not, you're free to say whatever you want about the bond election.
But the prom-
Excuse me for just a second.
I'm still confused.
Mr. Croft, you didn't get your question fully, fully answered?
I'm sorry.
You had a, a follow-up?
No.
He doesn't understand the money aspect.
Yeah, I understand the money aspect, but I'm still, why can't, well, anyway.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Croft.
Can I tag on to that? I think what Duro was asking was, in a nutshell, is a chamber luncheon considered a town-funded event?
Okay, just, just to, hopefully to, to muddy the water a little worse. Item, item two under education says assist with public education on the government obligation bond. I believe what Ms. Hatch was attempting to point out was if we struck item two, then we would not be having a line item that said we were helping to fund.
I concur with that, yes.
Yeah, and my, my concern was, is if that remains in there, it would be all too easy for someone to say that's using town resources to speak, and it would be too hard. I'm just suggesting it go out.
You bet.
You can do what you want at the chamber.
But it's, it's an actual line item that she was requesting to be struck. And, and I think, I think Ms. Smiley indicated that that would probably be our best bet as far as removing that from the contract. Mr. Smith, did you have anything to add? I feel sort of like a traffic cop, so.
No, that, that was perfect.
Okay, excellent.
What's the resolution?
I, I made it clear. You ought to make a quick resolution that the mayor said something that was clear. No? Okay, fine, fine. I, I
No.
Okay. Ms. Hatch's request to education, item two, assist with public education on the government obligation bond, that would be no problem to strike that from the contract tonight, correct, or is that correct? Excellent. Okay. Oh, please continue.
Okay. Now, in going through the budget, we're looking at the forty-five thousand dollars that has been proposed. The expenses being our computer at four hundred dollars, attending the Arizona Office of Tourism Governor's Conference on Tourism. This conference actually takes place in July, but you have to pay for it in June. So it comes right at the end of the fiscal year, but the attendance really isn't until the next year. So we have to pay for it in advance. It would be attending the ICSC, the International Conference for Shopping Centers, the one I attended with Ruth Mayday just a few months ago. Insurance, this is building insurance, workers' comp insurance, and things like that. Office supplies, printing and copying. And what I want to mention here real quick is the advertising for the Arizona Office of Tourism Co-op FY sixteen. This particular cooperative marketing program has a deadline application of June of the previous year. So once again, we're looking for the commitment to participate in their cooperative marketing in advance, but the funds wouldn't be spent until the fiscal year sixteen. Postage for relocation guides, rent on the property, building maintenance and repairs, the platinum sponsorship, the tools for business, of which, by the way, the town's logo will now appear on the website next to APS's as sponsoring partners. Any mileage for tourism or travel writers, if we happen to be hosting some travel writers again. Other, this, we do a little volunteer appreciation. We put, you know, give them a dinner and, and a little thank you gift. This last time, we gave them some sparkling cider, but it was really kind of fun. It was just something to let them know how much they're appreciated for all their volunteer hours that they give to us. Meals and entertainment, again, if we happen to host some folks for any travel writers and also for P V E D F, attendance to their breakfasts or anything G prep-related. Accounting fees, we did bring all of the payroll in-house, so that is all being done internally, but there are still fees with software and processing fees. Wages, wages, taxes, and benefits, left at the same from the last year, and then the utilities. It's for a total expenses of forty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. So we're just a little over. But we had an excess this last year, so.
Okay, excellent.
She's got a question?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There's point three zero F T E, that's, how many hours a week is that? I realize that's a point, a part of a full-time employee.
Yeah, and it's really kind of hard to, I'll try and explain it the best I can. It's mostly my time, and it varies anywhere from twenty-five percent to forty percent. It just all depends on what I'm doing for the parameters of visitor's center, economic development, promotion and marketing, anything community-related. So I tried to kind of pick an average, and so that's about as close as I can come. It could change a little bit. It might go up, it might go down.
Okay, now, are you the only one who's considered in this wages, taxes, and benefits?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is this, I don't see your salary on here. What is it?
That's a portion of my salary, my taxes, and, and any benefits that I would get.
Okay, and are we privy to?
And nine ninety requires you to disclose the salary of the C E O and the salaries of the overall other employees. Could you disclose that for us, please?
Yes, ma'am, but hang, hang on for a second. Ms. McKee?
I think that's what she's asking.
That was my question. Can you give us that information?
What my salary is? My salary is forty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Forty-seven, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hatch?
So that's pretty close to half your salary?
That's, that's, that's not counting the taxes, so you would add another ten percent to that forty-seven thousand. So it's about fifty-one thousand.
That's probably a bit more than point three. And then the other things that you have to disclose are like rent and things like that. What's the total rent that you pay?
We pay twelve hundred dollars a month, or fourteen thousand, four hundred, four, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars a year. So that's half.
And so we're paying roughly half of that?
Yes.
And what about utilities? Those are required to be disclosed?
That's half.
That's half. And so the town is, does the town contribute about half of the budget, the overall budget for your entity?
No. It's about twenty-six percent.
And yet, we're being charged half.
But if you look at the square footage of the building and, and the amount of occupancy the visitor's center has, it's at least half.
What's platinum?
That's your platinum sponsorship. Mm-hmm. That's the town's platinum sponsorship that we talked about previously.
And your total insurance cost?
Right off the top of my head, I, I would have to get back to you on that one because I don't know it right off the top of my head. But that's a portion, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three is a portion, which I believe is half of the workers' comp and half of the building insurance.
Okay. Were there any other questions on this side? Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Well, I don't, and this isn't going toward, toward Ms. Shumikowski right now, but I still would like for the public to get an answer to that question. If anyone in the public wants to go to a chamber luncheon and talk pro or con on this election coming up, would that be considered using town funds? Because of
We fund the building.
Please let Mr. Turner finish, yes, sir.
Because we, you know, we partner in this.
We fund the building.
Is that a problem? Just so that everybody knows.
That's a good question.
Hang tight for a second, Ms. Hatch. Mr. Turner, was there any other of that?
No, no, that's it.
That's a really good question.
Basically, can any of us speak? Yes, sir.
Request that that conversation be made public. You can't do that.
She's an attorney, I imagine she'll figure it out.
I'll share with you what, what Robert just said. And that is that the luncheons are not held at the chamber facility. They're held off-site and that they are paid for by the chamber. So I, with that circumstance, I don't think that the luncheon would be considered a town resource. It's normally, I'm, I'm assuming, and maybe I'm wrong here, that it's for chamber business. It's not town business, like this facility is town business. If there's a level of discomfort here and you want to be completely above question, then perhaps it would be a good policy not to have presentations other than factual presentations, which are permitted under the law. And it would be purely educational with perhaps no discussion, maybe just questions, where nobody takes a position, and it's just giving the public information. I think that would be culture as to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe, Mr. Smith, you and I spoke earlier about possibly a reissuance of our rules of conduct as, as council members, and hopefully that can be, can be covered in, in detail in there. Ms. Hatch, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I wondered if one answer to this might not be because we're paying salaries and things like that, which I think if I understand, you know, because we're paying a portion of this and that, could be considered being commingled, is if the staff just wrote down how their time was spent, indicating that it wasn't town business during that time period, that we might be somehow protected instead of just limiting the speech at the meetings. They do individually speak about their businesses. At times, they talk about what goes on in the town. We, town does, as a supporter, does have an opportunity to speak. And I just wonder if just some kind of documentation that we had this meeting and we didn't conduct town business at it, and we did this, this, and this, might satisfy the requirement to show how they're doing it and still allow businesses to speak freely as to what they support and don't support. It's just a suggestion.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
And that may, that may work, yes.
That would be tolerable? Okay. Excellent. Mr. Croft?
You know, I, I think that, to give you the best information, I think when, when we send the guidelines, we'll, we'll discuss this in, in the memo. So you'll get more clarification, not just off the top of my head, but thoughtfully. And we'll look at some case law if we can find it and get you some really good information, hopefully.
You bet. And, and if you can give us a scenario or two, it would not hurt.
Right, right.
Mr. Smith, I believe you were next.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to elongate the meeting, mayor, but I believe that a responsible thing to do within the accountability agreement might be to tighten up the scope of the agreement itself to clarify that the agreement is there for the purposes stated in terms of economic development and education and support, as well as the operation of the visitor's center. But that this agreement does not fund the chamber's monthly luncheons and their, their renting of Gabby Space or discussions that, where, you know, Tracy's gonna be providing support to the business community for their own internal business meetings.
Okay. I, I see a, a minor hiccup with that. Ms. Shumitowski, is this, this contract proposal is somewhat time-sensitive, is it not? Okay. Would, if we brought this back two weeks from now, would that be outside of that time-sensitive point? I was afraid of that. And I appreciate it, Mr. Smith, but that was, that was one of the things that was rolling through my head on that. I believe Mr. Turner had some, no, Mr. Croft.
If I don't eat my mic, one of the
Fine, fine.
Well, actually, the chamber doesn't pay for the luncheon. The people that attend the chamber, the luncheon, actually pay for the luncheon, so I don't know where that goes, but.
Okay. So that, the, the, the cost of the luncheon pays for the rental of the facility, more or less, or?
If I could clarify real quick, anything to do with the membership, events, anything along those lines is paid for by the memberships.
Okay, okay.
Anything to do with the visitor's center, economic development, and community promotion is the partnership with the town. So there are two separate things here.
Make it. Yes, ma'am.
That still doesn't account for the salaries and separating out your duties. I think you would have to document specifically that that, you know, some part of that didn't even I mean, you know, just saying that is fine, but you need to account for your time as well. That it's not being, that no part of the town's money is going into your, the salary portion is going into that. If you go and talk about tourism for the town of Chino Valley at that meeting, which you frequently do, then where are we?
You could have two different ball caps, one that said paid for by town of Chino Valley.
I'll put Dunn's hats on.
Yeah, all right. No, unfortunately, we do have to, we have to maintain the separation because we have to, have to be good stewards. And so if, if that time is accounted for, as, as Ms. Smiley pointed out, if that time is accounted for, hopefully that will, will keep us out of that coral reef of using town funds to, to influence the bond. Yes, ma'am, you had one more?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why it's time-sensitive. Is your bank account that low that you can't cover something? Or is there something in there you think we might not approve, or why is it time-sensitive?
Because we're in the second month into the fiscal year with this agreement, and it costs about three thousand dollars a month to run the visitor's center. So we're already using membership funds to support the visitor's center.
Yeah, but when you get the contract, you'd be reimbursed. People do that all the time. So I'm a little confused as to why we just can't, I mean, it's being brought up at the last minute. Instead, why can't we just have two more weeks to kind of firm up the language?
You had indicated earlier there was a certain amount of money that had to be brought forward for next year's advertising, I believe it was. That's what, that's what keyed me in on the thought that it was time-sensitive when you said you needed a certain amount of money for the Arizona Department of Tourism, something or other that.
That's, that's for the co-op agreement, but that doesn't take place until June of next year.
Hmm, okay, okay.
The question, I guess, do you have enough funds to kind of live on for now if we get two more weeks? And then you can reimburse the appropriate funds. So we could have maybe two more weeks.
Okay. Okay, that's a possibility, yes, sir.
Why are we delaying two weeks? I, I don't understand. Are we delaying it to rewrite the contract? Is that what we're doing?
She was gonna firm up
Is that what we're doing?
I think there was some, a possible clarification.
You okay?
It's all right, it's all right. These cough drops will last me till Thursday. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, it was, we, we were talking, we were talking about some simple Yeah, it was, we, we were talking, we were talking about some simple language that could be put in there to differentiate these so that the fire chief could go to a Chamber, to a Chamber luncheon and talk about it, one way or the other. And if that's, if that can be done in two weeks, then to me, it would be advantageous to the Chamber and the business community to wait that two weeks, get that language in there, so that it's clean, if that's possible, if it, if it works for you.
Okay.
I'm willing to do whatever it is you guys are willing to do.
Okay. Now comes the big question. If anybody has any heartburn with any other part of this contract, let them now speak or forever hold their peace because if we bring it back in two weeks and we have another half-hour session on it, it doesn't do the town any good, doesn't do Ms. Schimikowski any good and it doesn't do our public any good. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, if we're paying for these conferences, I'd like a report to the council on these conferences, when we're paying for things like that, how the money was used and what you did. It'd just be simple to accountability as well for the town's funds.
Okay. So, if you can bring the 1099 and some news on the count, is it 1099?
The 990, which I also like to mention as well, is available on GuideStar.com. So, anybody who has website access can go to GuideStar.com, type in Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce and pull up every 990 that's been filed for us.
Oh, okay.
The current one is in process of being prepared now by the accountant, but I can certainly bring a copy to the town tomorrow.
Easy enough. And if we...
That isn't what I was asking. I was saying if we pay for the meeting, that's fine to bring up the financial part that is just reported. I don't know how you report nonprofit when the town's paying for part, I guess as a grant or something. But in the past, sometimes it's reported as a grant and sometimes it's not, with the town funded. But what I was asking more specifically, if you attend a meeting on tourism, that a brief report, you reply to the town manager who can pass it on to the council or something of that nature so that if people say we paid for it, but we didn't get anything, that everybody knows that it's there, that's all.
Sure. Absolutely.
And, and as I said earlier on in the meeting, Ms. Hatch requested a certain form and please be sure...
I know how to, I know how to get it. I just needed it for this meeting.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to see the budget. I already knew that a long time ago.
Okay. Easy enough. Any further questions? Speak now or forever hold your peace. The chair would now entertain a motion to table this till...
I make a motion to table action item 7A till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Easy enough. Motion carries. We now can move into executive session. Okay, it's still Tuesday. Executive session, council may vote to recess regular meeting and hold an executive session, which will not be open to the public for following purposes. An executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 for discussion or consultation with the town attorney in order to consider its position and instruct the town attorney regarding the town's position regarding a settlement and release agreement and an agreement to extend the operation and maintenance services agreement with Fan Contracting Incorporated related to the construction of the wastewater treatment plant and potential fiscal impacts and alternative funding sources. We will now entertain a motion to recess to executive session.
Move to recess to executive session. Items nine, A and B?
Nine...
Or A?
Yeah, item A, A.
And we're going to come back for nine?
And then we'll come back for nine.
Nine?
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll recess to executive session now.
Turn your mic.
... 99. 99. You got it? Boom. They went the wrong direction. That's what I woke up. I jumped in the driver's seat 90 miles an hour all the way down to Fresno. No. Yeah. Anybody else coming with me? Yeah, we need it. We are. We're putting two, we're putting two hands in there. We got it. You guys should be... Robert, can I get you to zip down the hall and tell Jan to light the projector back up again?
I am in need of that. Boy, that might pass. He had a, he had a good idea tonight.
Let's see what we're going to do.
Didn't show up.
Two?
He didn't show up for his activity. Oh, he was okay.
Reconvene.
He was played mad. He said it's going to take about 10 minutes. Oh.
Okay. We did take 10 minutes. Okay. You took 10, 10 minutes.
Okay. We're all here.
We're going to do A.
We're back in session. Item 9A, we're reconvened. Item 9A, consideration and possible action to approve a temporary extension of that portion of the construction manager at-risk contract between the Town of Chino Valley and Fan Contracting Incorporated dated June 12, 2003, and all amendments thereto, providing for Fan to perform operations and maintenance services of the Chino Valley Wastewater Collection, Treatment and Effluent Discharge Project.
Motion to approve action to a temporary extension of that portion of the construction manager at-risk contact between the Town of Chino Valley and Fan Contract Incorporated dated June 12, 2003, and all amendments thereto, providing for Fan to perform operations and maintenance services at the Chino Valley Wastewater Collection, Treatment and Effluent Discharge Project.
Second.